Well, are you?
The August 5th, 2024 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. We have a single agenda item tonight, mandatory National Incident Management System Training for the council. It's going to be provided by Chief Chase.
Very good, thank you. Well, thanks, thanks for having me. Yeah, the reason we're here is National Incident Management System Training. It is mandatory in the sense that most government things are, how does the government make us do anything? They tie it to money and grant funding. So in general, the intent behind this is following a lot of severe disasters nationwide. Hurricane Katrina was one of them. FEMA and the federal government organized a national system for response with the intention of coordinating response, making it seamless across jurisdictions and being able to integrate federal, state, and local resources in a more effective way to better respond to emergencies. So they established, I'm gonna fly right to the beginning of it here because we have a little bit of a shortened timeframe. They established a couple of presidential directives. The Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5 and Presidential Preparedness Directive 8. And in the end, the way they mandated it was when we do a lot of our federal grant applications, they ask us to attest that our jurisdiction is NIMS compliant, is what they call it, National Incident Management System compliant. That throughout the organization, being the city of Auburn, there are multiple training levels depending on your involvement in the organization and that you've met the training requirements for that. This is the training that's required for senior elected or appointed officials. And what it is, is an introduction to the NIMS, National Incident Management, and the Incident Command System. So the intent behind tonight's training is really to open the door for you to have discussion, ask questions, and hopefully further discussions about what we do as a city, understanding the roles, your roles and requirements in an emergency situation, what the rest of the staff's roles are, right? So you know how they're working and what their needs might be. And that's why the federal government makes it mandatory. So every couple, every two years, I think, I have to fill out a sheet. I go to all the department heads and say, hey, give me your rosters, let's be sure everybody's up and trained. This is so widespread and lights, such a wide scope that our utility districts, the water district, the sewer district, they all have to have National Incident Management System training too. Because if we have severe events, if you, we're fortunate in the Northeast that we don't have these big rate regional events very often like the hurricanes in the south or earthquakes or those types of things. But you can imagine that if we do, the need for those public utilities to integrate into the command system so we're not stepping on each other's feet, we're using the resources as efficiently as possible is very, very important. So it's mandatory at so many levels. In fact, it's so important that the federal government requires it of schools. Schools have Incident Command System Training. The hospitals, because they get federal money through the Medicare system, have, they call it HICS, Hospital Incident Command System Training. It's all the same terminology, you know, our need to integrate with hospitals in an emergency exists. So we want to be sure that, you know, we have the same types of things. So the real basis of this is the Incident Command System. And I think we have to start by asking and really defining what an incident is. So let's talk about it. What's the definition of an incident? What are incidents that we encounter?
Floods.
Floods are a great example, right? Floods are a really good example where we use a good broad incident command system.
And winter storms.
No, pleasure storms, absolutely.
Electric, radio, and down.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. How about the main state parade? Is that an incident?
It creates coordination.
That's exactly right. So FEMA just defines an incident as any occurrence, whether it's natural or man-made, that's gonna require us to coordinate to prevent loss of life or property. That doesn't mean it has to be in a reactive way, right? The main state parade, it required us to coordinate resources to be prepared for that event so that nobody would get hurt, right? And the real premise behind this, and what I'm really proud that I think Auburn does really well, is when we have these big events, we get the right people in the room, we talk them through, we coordinate earlier, we understand how we're gonna talk to each other, we understand what the plans are, all of those types of coordinations are really done well. And the best part about that is it makes the event go very smooth. And what we haven't really had to capitalize on is the fact that we're also very well prepared if it really goes bad in a hurry, right? We've leaned ahead, we have contingencies in place, we have resources staged, we're ready for that. The other good thing about using the Incident Command System for these planned events is its practice. We don't get enough natural occurring events to be doing this, you know, once or twice a month. So using the Incident Command System in the ways that we do, we've got a command team in the city that really has used this three, four, five times a year, and we're good at it for those reasons. So that's a good thing. So that's our definition of an incident, right? Anything, any occurrence caused by human or natural phenomena that requires response action to prevent and minimize the loss of life and damage to property and the environment. The national response framework and this federal mandate is really based on the premise that they consider every incident to be local, and every incident should be handled at the lowest possible level, right? There are, there is an incident that could come to my mind in which, because that incident happened, it immediately has a federal response and everybody else's hands off. Rather, they expect all of the locals to do their response first, and then when they've exhausted their resources or their capabilities, they step it up to the next higher governmental entity, right? So we respond at the local level. I really have limited ability to even request state resources. What I can do is I can go through county government and request some state resources. It's kind of a pass-through, but they're looking for that span of control. They don't want everybody across the nation, it would be very inefficient down to the lowest level. You know, if I could call in federal resources on my own, and so could every other fire chief in the nation, be very ineffective, very inefficient user resources. So the premise is based on the fact that all the responses are, all incidents are, should be handled at the lowest possible level, and once you've exhausted your resources, you go to the next governmental entity to try to build that up and ultimately can get the federal resources. It's also built on the premise though that you build relationships and have agreements with non-governmental organizations, private sector groups, and that you work with the community to have their own level of preparedness. We've had many instances in which we've had a severe storm coming in, and we've talked about, and we've opened shelters, and it always amazes me, it's great to have that safety net for the few that need it, but it always amazes me at how resilient Mainers are, especially with the winter storms and weather, to, to be able to self-sustain, right, for some period of time. You know, we don't have a hundred, hundreds of people needing sheltering locations because they've been without power for 24 hours. In Maine, we're quite resilient. That comes from people working with individuals and helping them understand resiliency and talking about having battery backup and, and food stores on, on hand and water at home and those types of things, right? So it's all about this, this national response framework. So the National Incident Management System, it can, it provides a consistent nationwide template, again, for all governmental levels, state, federal, and local, and private sector, to prevent, to prepare, prevent, respond to, and recover from the effects of an incident regardless of size or location, to reduce the loss of life. This consistent nationwide template is a big part of the reason you're here, a big part of the federal mandate. So the intent here was to broaden capabilities and resiliency. So when a state, for example, exhausts their resources in a hurricane, they can call on the next northern state potentially to come in and those resources can integrate, right? In the fire service, we see this a lot. There are firefighters, fire chiefs, fire officers routinely from Maine that respond out west to play a role in their command structure at the wildfires because they've all been trained to the same level, right? It's not the Northeast that does their own thing, in out west, they do something completely different. We can go in and pretty seamlessly integrate into the command structure at those wildfires because of this structure, right? Because of this nationally required training that is standardized and mandated. So a couple of things that the National Incident Management System is. It's a comprehensive nationwide approach, we've just talked about that a little bit. It's, it's a set of concepts and principles for all threats. So this isn't just for the fire service, it isn't just for hurricane, it's for hostage situation, it's for act of terror, law enforcement incidents, it's for natural disasters, it's for environmental disasters, oil spills and the like, right? It's all hazards. It's a standard resource management procedure that enables you to coordinate among different jurisdictions and organizations. It establishes principles for communication and management of information. It is not a static system, and it is not a response plan. The last thing any of us would want was somebody in Washington DC writing a, a response plan about how we're gonna handle an incident in Auburn, Maine, right? It's not about that. What it is, it's a toolbox that, with training, and the toolbox allows us to go and create our plans that work for our jurisdiction, okay? It's not a resource ordering system, it's not a communication plan. There are tools within the system for how you manage resources. There are tools within the system for how you create communications plans. But again, we, we need to communicate the way we need to communicate based on our topography and our mountains and our tower locations and all those types of things, right? So it gives us the tools to be able to create communications plans, but doesn't tell us how we have to do it everywhere. Okay? We're gonna focus tonight primarily on the Incident Command System and Emergency Operations Centers. This command and coordination has two additional pieces though. It's called the multi-agency coordination groups and the joint information systems. These really are tools that are used with big regional events, okay? And I really think in our time, the best use of our time is to really allow you guys to ask a bunch of questions and us to work in these first two boxes up here. But we will touch base on what the other two are. So what is command? This is the Incident Command System. So command is the act of directing, ordering, or controlling by virtue of explicit statutory, regulatory, or delegated authority. So in normal, in a lot of classes, I have a discussion about where does that authority come from, right? So as the elected officials within your jurisdiction, within the city of Auburn, you have principal responsibility to protect the people, right? How, what tools do you use or have you put in place to, to make that happen, right? The tools you've used are through the legislative process, through your ordinance process of setting out the guidelines and the guide rails that we have to use. You've used tools of appointing fire chiefs and police chiefs, right? State law gives statutory authorities to fire chiefs and police chiefs to do certain things to help public safety, right? You have the regulatory authority to pass ordinances that help protect people. You have regulatory authority to adopt emergency action plans or emergency operations plans for the city, right? Those are the authorities that come to you with the responsibility of protecting people. I'll give you, so the statutory authority of being a fire chief, state law would empower and allow me as the duly appointed fire chief to raise buildings, tear buildings right down to the ground if that's what needs to be done to stop a fire from spreading down a whole block, right? Covered in state law. But that state law applies to me because you've granted that to me by appointing me as a fire chief. There are, there are statutory authorities that are given to police chiefs by being appointed as a police chief, right? So that's how you transfer those responsibilities to us. Emergency Operations Centers are a tool in this National Incident Management System. Where command is an action, right? It's, it's taking delegated or statutory authority and directing resources to make something happen. What an Emergency Operations Center is, is it's a location. And I use that term really loosely now because it becomes so virtual as a world that it could be a virtual location. But an Emergency Operations Center is a location, it is a place by which people get together who are stakeholders, who are subject matter experts, and support an Incident Command System, right? I've got a couple of great examples of where, you know, EOCs have really helped me on incidents. When there's a bad storm coming into the state of Maine, MEMA, Maine Emergency Management Agency, activates their Emergency Operations Center. Let's take a minute and think about who you would want in the state of Maine Emergency Operations Center when a severe winter storm with, you know, possible live strike, power outages, those types of things. When those storms are coming into the state, who would you think MEMA has in the room to talk through and be coordinated in their efforts?
CMP.
CMP is always in the room, absolutely.
State pilot control.
Yep, so state police?
If things, mains are by the thirty.
Main turn by the thirty, absolutely. Yep, state DOT, right?
DOT. Public manager, city manager might be there.
They might, yeah, they, they might, yeah. Right, so, so the Emergency Operations Center, the point of this is that we can use all of our, I think of the EOC as a, like an octopus that has tentacles out there, right? I can, I can make things happen, but I can also bring information back in, right? So it becomes a hub, not just for directed action throughout the state, but for directed information, right? So us all being co-located in a room at the MEMA EOC, I'm getting some real-time information. If you're the DOT rep, I'm getting some real-time information about what's happening to the roads in, in the different parts of the state. I understand the impacts of the turnpike. If we have a catastrophic collision on the main turnpike that's gonna shut northbound traffic down for five hours, that information's gonna come to the EOC very quickly. And you know what? CMP hears that right from the horse's mouth, and they can redirect their resources around that to go, you know, they'll put power together. It's that type of coordination that comes out of an EOC. The same thing happens, you know, we, we activate EOCs in this city, and we've done it pretty regularly for planned events, right? So we have, you know, the, the Fire Department Administration, the Police Department Administration, Public Works Administration. We have our officers, our supervisors out there with their job plans, their action plans, and, and we're sitting in the EOC hearing all of that, but it's so that we can have that level of coordination. Excuse me, so if the situation takes a left-hand turn on us really quick, we're all in the loop about that information really quickly, right? PW has something happen, I hear it because it comes into the room. I'm passing that information right out to my folks in the field so that they can react to it, okay? So those are some of the things that we do from an Emergency Operations Center standpoint and why EOCs are so important to us. So that Incident Command System is a standardized approach to on-scene control and coordination. It's modular, it has a common structure, no matter where you go in the US, I'm confident at this point, we are 15 years into this, being a mandate, confident in the US that if I were to go anywhere in the United States or its territories and I said, I'm gonna be the planning sections chief, everyone would understand what that means, right? It's, it's common structure, common terminology. It's, it's a structure for incident management that integrates, coordinates procedures, personnel, equipment, and facilities. Why? All of this is to be efficient with resources. Katrina was an incredible disaster and a falling on their face for FEMA. And what came out of it, most importantly, was a lack of being able to coordinate across jurisdictions. Federal government was doing things that impeded state resources and so on and so forth. It wasn't that everybody wasn't trying to help, it's that they didn't coordinate it, and they fumbled and stumbled on each other. That was a big impetus for the establishment of this system. That's an awful messy slide. So in most jurisdictions, here's what senior officials are responsible for, right? In your role, you're responsible for ensuring the safety of citizens and protecting the property. You're responsible for ensuring continuity of government, right? We saw this, the first time I'd ever, as many times, for as long as I taught this class and we talked about continuity of government, the only real challenge I've ever had with continuity of government came with COVID, right? We had never encountered anything. You can have bad storms and the city hall is closed for a couple of days. That's not really a hindrance to continuity of government. If you can't get people together for a month and you don't have any tools for being able to meet remotely, that's a struggle with continuity of government, right? If people can't come in for a month and pay their taxes because everything's locked down, that's a struggle with continuity of government, right? You're responsible for activating specific legal authorities, disaster declarations, evacuation, states of emergency, delegating the authority for incident command to the IC and the UC, right? That's you appointing a police chief and a fire chief and delegating those authorities for us to take the lead role on scene command. Responsible for coordinating with the PIO to keep the media and the public informed, requesting assistance from state agencies through the EOC, resolving any resource allocation conflicts. I, I've got an example of this, and it's not my own experience obviously when I tell you the story, but I've heard, been to conferences, I've talked to folks, and I've heard secondhand about jurisdictions that, you know, I'm gonna just use arbitrary numbers, but the examples still bear. Hey, I've got enough, in these, out west with these big wildfires, right? I've got enough resources that if we throw everything we've got, I can save these six blocks. But if I spread it out all over the city, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do. I'll tell you that when those decisions come, it's not a fire chief that wants to be standing there saying, yeah, we're not gonna, we're gonna put everything we got at those six blocks, right? They're gonna look for some elected and appointed official guidance on making those tough resource decisions, right? So that would be a place where we would come back and say, hey, there are some decisions that need to be made, right? I think one of the real places where that plays in would be realistic for us on a hypothetical is major flood evacuations, right? That would be something where we would come and look and say, hey, we're looking for guidance. This is gonna impact a lot of businesses, right? We want to be sure that we've talked this through at all levels. We're more than comfortable, Chief Mo and I are more than comfortable coming saying, here's our recommendation, right? Here's what we recommend, here's why, here's the science, but help us make the decision about, you know, that telling all these businesses they're gonna have to evacuate and be closed based on, you know, our recommendations. Any questions so far? See Hope, I'm sure we're doing fine on time. If I'm, I've been accused of talking like the Micro Machine Man, so if I am talking too fast, please, please let me know. So we're gonna get a little bit more into the nuts and the bolts now of what makes up the Incident Command System. The characteristics, the structure, those types of things. We already talked about it being a standardized on-scene, all-hazards incident management. It allows us to opt, adopt an integrated organizational structure to match the needs and complexities of an incident. So I don't want you to think that every, first of all, in the fire service, we're always operating with more than one person, right? We don't do anything alone, it's just our mantra, it's written into the OSHA standards. It's always a group or a company of three or more. For us to even go into a building, you have to have two people in the building, two people out. All of that to say, we don't operate as one-man teams everywhere in the fire service. That inherently means we always have to have some kind of command structure, right? It's both a paramilitary command structure with regard to our org structure, but it also means that there's somebody in charge of that group at all times. This premise is built on it being modular, so we use that universally 100% of the time. Sometimes when we have big incidents, that command structure is this big, right? And sometimes it's just one company who has a lieutenant that's in charge. But the premise is always the same, right? That there's someone in charge. And the reason for that is that you have efficient use of resources and you can keep people safe and get things done. So here are some of the examples of some incidents that we've already talked about. You know, the, the presidential visits, two presidential visits in a year for us, that took a lot of coordination, right? It really did. So the benefits of ICS, it meets the needs of any size incident. It allows personnel from a variety of agencies to meld together, we've talked about that. It provides logistical administrative support to operational staff, and it's cost-effective by avoiding duplicate efforts. So this is not intended to be your org, your org chart. I think a lot of people assume, you know, that I'm in command. I'm in command very, very little in the city of Auburn. As things escalate and there's a need for me, that role is available to me. But I'm just as happy in certain situations, a lot of law enforcement situations, we play a, a secondary role to them. We're in the command structure, right? But we're not in command. I have lots of fires that we run, that we have a battalion chief on scene. My next question is, how can I help you? And I fit in elsewhere in that organizational, organizational structure. So it shouldn't be interpreted that every time we talk about an ICS command structure, that that's the org structure. I'll tell you, a little self-deprecating here, but I, I can't keep my shoes tied half the time. You do not want me in Instant Command at a rope rescue situation, right? There are, I have some great people that work for me that are really good at that. I'm completely okay with them being in command of those situations, right? And having that control, experts, subject matter experts, let them have it, right? So as we build out this ICS structure, this is what's called the general staff. These blocks, as you see them show up, aren't a template. If I don't need one of these blocks, I just simply don't activate it, okay? This whole premise of building out your Incident Command Structure is predicated on a concept called span of control, okay? There are lots and lots of management studies that say it's very difficult for any one person to control more than five to seven people and effectively, especially in high danger situations, effectively be able to keep them safe and keep them on task. So what we tell people that are, you know, they get on scene, they just got their one company with two folks, they can manage that, they can keep, you know, the three of them or the five of them safe, on target, and being effective and resource efficient. If four more companies show up, so I've got 20 people, I can't watch all 20 of them. So we break that into companies, right? I've got four companies of five people, that means each one of those companies has a supervisor that reports to me. I only have to listen and, I give direction to the five supervisors, they give me information, they control their own people. I maintain my span of control and so have they. And that's how we build out this command, this command structure. So if I'm in Incident Command and I'm noticing that I've got more people, I need to break that work out, right? I need to delegate it out. This general staff, operations, planning, logistics, and finance, these are management positions that I activate when I need it, when I need to control my span of control. Operations section, these are the doers in my organization, okay? These are boots on the ground, field commanders, the, the tacticians, whether that's firefighters, police officers, public works, equipment operators, whatever it is, they're the doers, right? Our planning section, the planning section and the planning section chief is the person I appoint to look out in the future and say, what's gonna happen next, okay? They're the, the planners. So I usually, if I'm on an incident, if I'm four inches, four hours into an incident, I take a moment and I pause and I say, is this incident gonna go another operational period? We usually say eight hours is an operational period. If I think this incident's gonna go more than eight hours, I find myself a planner, right? I say, hey, you're the planner, you've got four hours to plan what happens between 11:00 PM tonight and 7:00 AM tomorrow morning. And that person goes to work gathering information about the situation, gathering weather reports, understanding the resources that are on scene, understanding our tactical objectives, and creating a plan for that next operational period, okay? Logistics, these are the getters, right? When a plan has come together, here's what we're gonna do in the next eight-hour period, but I need, I need generators, I need water tenders, I need CMP support, whatever it might be. That plan goes to logistics and logistics gets that, right? Whether it's through purchasing, acquiring, mutual aid agreements, they bring that together to be on scene at 11 o'clock when the next operational period's gonna start and, and do what they need to do. And then lastly is the finance section. They're the payers, clearly, but also admin work. And I don't mean, and I mean admin work in the sense that when you get these developed incidents, we need to be able to be sure that the PO system is maintained, we have financial accountability, right? We're following existing purchasing policies. But what about insurance claims, right? If we're bringing in a bunch of If we're bringing in a bunch of partners and somebody gets injured, who's helping us with injury reporting, who's helping us with a vehicle accident, right? That's all in finance and admin section. So if you look at this, I will tell you that three of these four boxes, I'm gonna try to fill with people that aren't part of my fire department organization. Because I don't have anybody that's gonna be really great for me in these roles. But elsewhere at City Hall, there sure is, right? There are people within the city of Auburn that are gonna be really good at some of these things. We tap, we certainly will tap another public safety chief or whatever to help us with planning. Finance, we have people that are great at that, they know our policies, they know the procedures for getting POs, they know how to, you know, how to fund that and track it. A lot of our incidents can be reversible if certain things have happened. You don't wanna miss the opportunity to track those costs, right? Finance will sometimes have a relationship with logistics to be sure that we have time standing when resources show up, right? If we had somebody set a wildfire that got away from us and it took us three or four days to get to put out, if that was found criminally negligent, then we can go after them for the cost. We track the cost when people check in on that job and when they check out so that we can bill, try to hold them accountable for that. So there are a lot of roles here, some of which are very important to the incident command structure, but might be filled by people other than first responders. Couple of foundational characteristics, common terminology, this is a big one. When you get into developed ICS, the day of 10 codes has really gone away. Very rarely as you start working across jurisdictions, fire department doesn't do it anymore. You won't hear any of my guys on the radio say 10-4 anymore. Because those 10 codes aren't the same across jurisdictions, right? So if I were to go to support a wildfire in Vermont and I was using 10 codes and I asked for a 10-56, that might be a wrecker in one place and it might be a water tender somewhere else or whatever the case might be. So we don't use, in ICS, we don't use 10 codes or coded messages when you're trying to integrate multi-agency. It's a premise of management by objectives. When we establish an incident command system, we have clearly defined, smart objectives that we're trying to get done in that operational period, right? It's the easiest way to keep an organization of 20 to 100 people focused on what their jobs are, right? When there's a lot going on and there's a lot of chaos, it's really easy to get off your track and address the injury that might be right there or whatever it might be. Management by objectives helps keep that large group focused on what our goal is for this period of time. Management by span of control, we've already touched base on that. Trying to keep everybody managing no more than five to seven people. Build out your infrastructure as you need to with managers to be able to keep people safe. It's a system of comprehensive resource management. It establishes how to transfer a command. If we have a big incident, no one can sit in the command post for 60 hours, right? So there's a process in the ICS about how I document that and pass it along and delegate my statutory authority to you to continue that operation in my absence with my predefined plan and the objectives that we've outlined. There's this principle of chain of command and unity of command. I think we all understand chain of command and a hierarchy, that shows up in our org structures. But this premise of unity of command is a very, very important one. It goes back to, I like an interview question that we do whenever we hire a new firefighter and it's, you know, if you were told to go put a vent on that roof and as you were going to do that, another officer grabbed you and said, hey, I really need you to help with this patient, how do you rectify that, right? How do you reconcile those two opposing orders? And the principle of this unity of command is that every person in your organizational structure only gets their direction from one other person and you report all of your findings to that same person, right? So if you do that, it keeps everyone laser focused on who am I responsible to and whom am I responsible for. This is hugely important and we teach this and we drill this into our people, not to get caught up in conflicting orders, right? And it can really be problematic for us if commanders or other people of authority don't understand that that's how our guys are gonna react, right? If, if I was on scene and anyone in this room showed up and had something, my expectation is that if that went to one of my guys, they probably aren't gonna do it. They're gonna pass that information up one step at a time until it gets to me. We get the opportunity then to filter that at the command level and if there are directions that come out of it, those come back down through one step at a time, right? So that everybody's laser focused and I only listen to my lieutenant, who only listens to the captain, who only listens to command or whatever it might be, right? So that we don't get off those marks and off those distractions. It's a modular organization, we only turn on the modules that we need. If I don't need finance for this call, I don't have to activate it. There's nothing in the rulebook that says you can't, you know, you have to go and stand this all up. The planning results in an incident action plan. There are incident facilities and locations, integrated communications, unified command we'll talk about, accountability. I need to know where everybody is, what they're doing and that they're safe, right? So we, in a detailed way, keep track of people as they show up and when they leave. So I'm not left with somebody left in the woods or whatever the case might be, right? Huge accountability is a big thing for us. And then information management and intelligence. So two, I wanna touch base on relatively quickly, integrated communications. Communications has taken a very big leap with, through this process and there's been a lot of federal funding available for communications. But jurisdictions have done a lot on their own too. We have a great integrated radio system at this point for the city of Auburn and most of it in Auburn. That gives us a lot of channels to work with that broadcast well, that can be heard well, and that's a big benefit to us. The system itself drove the establishment of what are called the con ops channels. There is a series of channels that we have in all of our radios that are universal across the state and then there's a series of channels on our radios that are universal nationwide. So what that means is if I was in an established incident, knowing I have a lot of resources coming from elsewhere in the state, we can switch to one of those channels in order, most of the communities have integrated with that because again, it's tied to federal funding, right? So they will have those con ops channels in their radio. That means somebody from Bangor can come here and I can get on a channel with our radio system and their radio system and we can talk. And that's a huge, huge piece to that interoperability, that multi-jurisdiction coordination. Any questions? This premise of unified command. This is gonna sound kind of contradictory to what I just said, but we'll get there. I just said that unity of command means that everyone takes their order from one person and they give that information back up to that person so that we maintain that laser focus on what our jobs are and who we're responsible to, who we're responsible for. There's a principle called unified command that allows for there to be multiple people making informed command decisions. And we do this very, very often. When, most of our calls, many of our major calls are multidisciplinary. Fire, EMS, police, public works often play a role in all of them. What we typically do is we establish a unified command. That's bringing one of the key decision makers from each one of those organizations and co-locating him in the command post. And the intention here is that we get the best of all of their concerns, their priorities, all of those things hashed together in one decision-making process so that we're not stepping on each other's feet. But how do we maintain unity of command out of that? We do that by hashing all of that stuff out so there's still only one message that comes out of it. So it's like putting four minds on a body, right? We hash it all out, but the levels below us still only hear the one message that we've settled on through that period of time, okay? So we don't end up with PW, you know, evacuating west and fire evacuating east, right? We hash it out there, decide the priorities and it's the single message that's up. This sometimes, we, good organizations who practice this routinely and do it, do unified command often, both in emergency and non-emergency incidents, build relationships that allow you through time to understand people's personalities, perspectives, priorities and get to resolution on that. Other times, sometimes there's conflict that can't be resolved, there's conflicting priorities, right? That's the type of thing where we might step it up a level to the city manager or the council and say, help us resolve. Bob feels really strongly that this has to be a priority. Chief Moen feels strongly that it has to be this. We can't come up with a single message to help us set that priority. Might be one of the places we look for further guidance. Any questions? There's common terminology, management by objectives. When we establish a formal incident command and we start making assignments, the end goal is that the incident gets resolved or remediated with the most efficient use of resources possible. It is much easier to determine the beginning of an incident than the end, okay? There are a lot of times in which long after, while the flood in December was a great example, incident command system stays, sometimes stays active for weeks and months after natural disasters, right? And so you grow it through the emergency and the response phase. You have a lot of people on the ground mitigating that incident and then it slowly shrinks, but you maintain a core and sometimes those disciplines change, right? I don't necessarily need firefighters now, but I need engineers. I need people who can do damage assessments, those types of people. I need my public works folks that can go and assess systems and see what's damaged. The way that we keep all of that on track for weeks and months is through incident action plans, okay? What you typically do, and I touched on this earlier, you establish a operational period, say eight hours, 12 hours. And by writing an incident action plan that clearly outlines the current state of the situation, the objectives we hope to achieve in the next eight hours and then what that end result should look like at the end of that eight hours, it allows us to create this continual line of communication and progression through three months if necessary, right? While I'm operating with the incident action plan I have in my hands, my planning group is writing the incident action plan for the next eight to 12 hours, right? They're informed with what has been done, what we think we're gonna get done and then how they keep those going. So the incident action plan becomes the glossary or the bible of how we're gonna progress through an incident, sometimes for weeks or months on a continual basis. It also creates a really good legal document for what you've done. A lot of incidents, some incidents, especially things that might have a criminal element, things of national significance. We've seen, we've seen it just recently garner a lot of analysis after the fact, right? There are committees that look through how things were done and all of those types of things. The documentation is hugely important to show the methodology and the mindset that was used to get you from, through your decision-making process and from one step to the other. It's really important that the documentation supports your actions. So it's a modular organization that's developed from the top down based on the size of the incident and the complexity. The more danger associated with an incident, especially the more danger to the public or responders, we usually even narrow that span of control up a little bit more. So I say three to five is ideal. If we're doing really dangerous operations, our level of supervision is like one to three, right? So we want, you know, no more than three people under anybody's span of control. That requires us to fill out boxes of our incident command a little bit more. So. Wanna take a quick break? I don't know why that. I needed a second boat, where's the next place we call if we need a second boat? Does that boat have some capability that ours doesn't, right? It can hold a whole bunch of more booms for absorbing an oil slick than ours can, right? We maintain those resource inventories so that we know who to call on. And so people know what we have to bring to the battle as well. We establish, you'll actually, I saw one of the agenda items was to look at the fee schedule. We have established fees for our resources. That is part of, can be part of mutual aid agreements. There's a statewide mutual aid agreement for the state of Maine. It does not have to be at no cost. We have no-cost mutual aid agreements with our neighboring agencies because of the mutual aspect of that. We use them and they use us and we're at the ready in both those instances. If I was called to a rustic accounting, because an incident deemed that, the chance of us getting reciprocity on that is very slim. So one of the reasons we establish cost fee structures for our equipment apparatus resources is so that we could bill for that if needed, right? The other reason is to be able to go after some compensation if it was a result of criminal activity. The last one really is federal disaster declaration or federal reimbursements if a disaster is declared, right? We wanna know what those rates were pre-established. So it's not arbitrary, doesn't seem arbitrary to them, but it's been established and adopted rates. I've talked ahead of my slides, go to bed. Chain of command and unity of command. We've talked about unified command, the other place, so we talked about unified command being an instance in which we have multiple disciplinaries, multiple disciplines. So within the city of Auburn, maybe the best decisions are made with PD, fire and public works being in the same row, or within the same jurisdiction. The other reason you might do a unified command is if you have multiple jurisdictions and the incident spans that jurisdictional boundary, right? You don't want, if we had an environmental disaster on the river, say a spill of some kind, oil spill, right? There's certainly repercussions and repercussions to both sides of the river. We don't want the two agencies conflicting and fighting for resources, right? We don't want something that I do to make the situation worse over there, right? So you may bring together a unified command from two jurisdictions and say, hey, we're gonna run this as one incident and we're gonna share resources, we're gonna share the decision-making process so that your interests get an opportunity to get represented in the decision-making process as do my own. Talked about accountability. So depending on the incident size and the complexity, command establishes support facilities. We talked about an EOC as being one of them. Sometimes we establish staging areas. We need to get new resources. Our central station is used, when we have work in Fire, we bring in mechanic falls, Poland, and New Gloucester to stay at our station for the next wave of resources we need, right? During the October shooting, we had a lot of ambulances coming into the area. And without a level of coordination, and coordination becomes inefficient use of resources. Right? So what did we do? We established a couple of spots, stopped them three miles away from everything. Right? And have them on the ready there and get them into response. So staging areas might be an example of facilities and locations. The incident command post, this is typically located at the scene to some extent, right? At the scene can be certainly highly variable depending on how safe you are. It might be a block away, but it's on the ground, on the scene. Incident bases, we talked about staging, mass casualty triage areas. Right? Places where patients are brought before they can go to the hospital so that we can triage them. We can determine the priority by which they will go to the hospital. Points of distribution, I think this is, you know, a real opportunity for us as we revise emergency operation plans for the city. The, Auburn did an incredible job standing up point of distribution with the senior center and the food distribution that they did during COVID. That's a point of distribution. We can have prescripted plans for that if we had to bring in a couple tractor trailer loads of bottled water, for example, right? We can have a plan, they're called PODs, point of distribution, for how you efficiently, where that is, and how you efficiently distribute that essential resource in an emergency out to the populace to meet their needs, right? Information and intelligence managing. This is both a location and a role, but it's gathering, analyzing, and assessing, and most importantly, sharing data and information about what's going on. Data is just one stream, and I think that this really goes to something that, you know, I think we stress and do well is we break a lot of minds together. Data is raw until somebody who has, right, some backgrounds and history or some experience can process that and turn it into something actionable, right? And so when we get co-located and we get the opportunity to share that information, much better ideas come out of it, right? A much better process of the raw data comes out and we get more effective use of that information. So incident commanders in general, we've talked about this. The guy who's going to delegate and set objectives, operations are the doers. Planning's develop the incident action plan, logistics gets stuff, and finance pays for it. I think this is really important, and I kind of stressed on it earlier. The most qualified person at the scene is the best one to designate for incident command. And that isn't necessarily always the chief, so don't think of it as the org chart, right? We always have, there are roles to play, and there are things that I'm really good at, and there are some things that I'm not really good at. And it's okay to have that be somebody else. The big thing with that is, though, I do have the statutory regulatory authority, right? So it's that process of being able to give that to somebody else. So the commander's roles, lead the incident. Receive policy direction from senior officials. Establish the objectives. Direct and develop the incident action plan, direct the development of the incident action plan, which will be done by the planning section's chief. Ensure safety, delegate authority to others. Coordinate with the emergency operations center. Provide information to internal and external stakeholders and establish and maintain a liaison with agencies participating in the incident. We I can't express enough how much the importance of information has come into our jobs. Just back earlier in my career, people knew about fires after they happened. And we were controlling the narrative after it. And in just, you know, 15 years with social media, if we're not on the information management role within 20 minutes, it makes our life harder on scene. Right? There are a lot more people in the way. Call centers get inundated with calls about what's going on. We've really had to prioritize incident management, information management in incidents as one of the top things we do early on with the scene. And people's expectations have changed. If we had an incident that shut down Riverside Drive and we didn't get any information out before the morning commute, and we would hear about it, right? Their expectation is that we've gotten that information to them in a way that they can they can be actionable and they can make their lives easier around that. So it really has become a big part of what we do. That's required us to build some internal mechanisms to be able to get information out. But we also have, you know, within the city of Auburn, an incredible team of people that you can call at two in the morning and say, hey, can you get some information out for us? And they wake up, these aren't firemen, these aren't police officers, but they're people you can call at two o'clock in the morning and help us get through things. So very important. Your role, delegate authority for on-scene operations to the IC or the unified command. Again, you've done that through your appointments of chiefs. Provide policy guidance on priorities and objectives. Activate specific legal authorities, right? I know the provision for disaster declarations, we have a provision for that. One of the things that we also have is some tools within the purchasing policy, right? That give us a little bit more room, still with some guardrails, but a little bit more room with regard to the bid process in an emergency situation, right? Gives us the opportunity to do things a little less bureaucratically if the time doesn't allow us to because of an emergency situation. Those are good policy things that keep us leaning forward as a city that you have direct control over. I think supporting, you know, continuing to support efforts for our plan development, exercise, those types of things really are the things that can pay dividends as well. I can see, you know, points and roles in the EOC, there are a lot of, you know, a lot of talents in this room and a lot of talents, a lot of, I teach this class all over the state and in a lot of the small towns. You know, they've got selectmen or whatever it might be that are really good at finance and know that they could play a role there, right? And so, you know, you might, the fire chief might also be, you know, sometimes the public work superintendent, right, in some of these small towns. In general, what we say is if there's a place for you and you get the specific training, you can play that role. You just need to recognize that when you're in that role, right? If you're in the emergency operations center to support something because, you know, you were a previous water district superintendent or whatever the case might be, that you're still, now you're falling within the command structure under the incident commander, right? That we have to fall into that. Now you have a role also alongside the incident commander, but the two have to be separated. And, you know, so understand where you're going to fit into the organizational structure, whether it's going to be as, you know, a council person or playing a role. Delegation of authority. We've talked a little bit about this. We have written policy, every emergency service organization has written. I don't have to be present to say it's okay for the deputy chief or the battalion chief or even the captain to take command. We've established that through internal policy, right? I have a chain of command that trickles down. That's how we establish that ahead of time. But we also establish policies for reporting requirements, right? There are things I want to be woke up for at night and I'll get a call for, right? And there are things that I don't get woke up. You know, we have a lot of discussion and I think it's reasonable. I think, you know, the city manager does a great job of setting expectations for us. I expect my crews to have an ear for what types of incidents or things that might be occurring that will have political implications, right? Because I want to pass that up through the city manager so you're aware of those too, right? Earlier than better, earlier is better. So summary of the incident commander's roles, manage the incident and keep the EOC informed. EOC director should support the commander, provide resources, plan for resource requirements, facilitate situational awareness. Your role, provide the incident commander and EOC staff with authority, with mission and strategic vision, and with policy. Okay? Any questions on this? That is the meat and potatoes of the presentation. I certainly would like to, beyond finance, logistics, operations, and planning, we build, as we build out our incident command, we've talked about the importance of public information officer. As we get any major incident, we always establish a safety officer. Our number one priority is our staff safety. And then we try to identify a liaison officer. This is a place where somebody might be able to play a great role. What that liaison officer is, is the person that's principally responsible for integrating with the non-governmental organizations or other entities that need to be part of your command structure. So it might be at the hospital, it might be at Auburn Housing, it might be with CMP. It might be with the Red Cross, it might be with NOLA, it might be with the National Weather Service. Because if we think about the incident commander's span of control, if he's really trying to pay attention and command five to seven, but he's getting input and feedback through seven or eight other external sources, becomes overwhelming, right? So what we look for, I delegate that, I say, no, appoint a liaison officer. Let those seven outside sources talk to them. I get my information from one spot, he gets his direction from me. So that's an important role for the organization. So that's what it would look like in general. Now, I hope it's one of these next slides. This is my example of, hey, we've got a run-of-the-mill small incident, you know, less than 10 people. This was what it might look like. You know, something like this is what it might look like for, anybody recognize that one? That's. Oklahoma City, yeah. FEMA doesn't do anything in that kind of time. This is like six-year-old presentation, Miami. Had to happen, that Oklahoma City, that's how old the slides are. But my point is you can see how it's modular and scalable, right? You build out what you need, if you don't need it, you don't activate it. But it just can continue to grow as new aspects or new complexities of the incident. Come on. What, let's talk for a second about what makes an incident, what would make an incident complex? What types of things make an incident complex?
Route closures.
Okay.
Or geographic disruption.
Geography's a big one, right? If it's really spread out or somehow geographically there's barriers or, like you said, major RV shutdown, absolutely makes it incident more complex.
Hazards materials. That's the one that scares me more than anything.
It is.
You know, railroad, industry, transportation, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. Gordon Grant did a great risk metric that, and hazardous materials would fall into the low-frequency, high-risk events, right? So they don't happen very often, but there's incredible political, social, economic, environmental points associated with it. And so Gordon Grant's whole theory was, it's hard to justify putting enough resources into preparedness for this, but we've got to. Because it doesn't happen very often. If those types of things happened once a month, we'd be so good at them that we wouldn't have to worry about it as much. But because it's low frequency and high risk, we have to put a lot of concerted effort into preparation for those things because you don't see it very often. And it takes a lot of work to stay good at it. So I agree with you, yeah, the environmental ones scare me. And we are at the transportation hub, we have a lot of stuff in the city. And a lot of stuff that passes through the city.
Casualties.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, casualties, both injuries and deaths, certainly. We're still a small community that affects people, people know people. That brings a lot more people looking at the scene, a lot more people to the scene, spectator, those types of things as well add to the complexity. But then it's also managing staff, you know, staff safety is our biggest concern. Some types of incidents are really harder on staff than others. That adds to the complexity. Sometimes we start thinking about with certain incidents, hey, it might take me three times as many people to do this because I don't want anybody doing this for more than a couple of hours, right? So I've got to have other people staged. I don't want somebody to be there all that time. Those types of things add to the complexity of incidents, absolutely.
Multiple jurisdiction.
Absolutely, right? So it's integrating that thing, it's getting everybody on board to coordinate and work well together. Definitely a challenge, definitely a challenge.
Ice storm is a good example of that, right? Everybody's trying to grab the same resources.
Yeah.
You know, if we're pulling resources off the guys that come off the turnpike, you know, trying to bring them to our community because they're on their way somewhere else. So how do you manage that, especially if it's not just statewide, but it's regional, you know, doing.
So one of the things that I think that, you know, I need to continue to work on and get better at, and I think there's a community we can improve on. One of the ways to do that, so the state of Maine at one point had three, maybe four 35 KW generators that they could put to places. And of course, like I said, every emergency starts at the local level and then I can go to county and request it, county will put in a request to the state. Well, the state's waiting on those because they want to be sure they go to hospitals or critical facilities and you have to plead your case. And then boom, the three or four go. And you're open, you can be left without anything. One of the things that as we do more emergency planning and redraft our emergency operations plans is getting into some contracts with private suppliers, right? So you, a lot of emergency operation plans are things that are critical that you need, that are going to be in short supply, that you can't get from the county or the state level is to go to your equipment rental places or whatever it might be and establish a relationship with them that you update every couple of years, right? And say, here are the terms, but it avoids price gouging when you need it, right? It sets the expectation that it'll be available for you and you create a relationship and say, hey, if called upon, you'll deliver a generator, a pallet of sandbags, whatever those resources that you think are crucially important. That's one of the things we could do, right? We could get better at. Working on, so. Any questions for me? Go ahead, please.
I said, yeah, one question, I guess in thinking of like probably most common manifestation of this process, probably water or snow related weather events. What does it look like, call it last December when we had a huge, I guess it was rain event, we ended in the winter. And it's multi-jurisdictional, but what did it look like for Auburn's command center?
Yeah.
Was that command center in itself multi-jurisdictional? Or were we operating, and so was Lewiston, and so was Poland, and we were all communicating together?
So on the storm side, and I'll take that storm.
Or any storm, wait, I don't.
Yeah, if we were talking about a severe winter storm, we will usually have a pre-storm meeting of department heads and managers before the storm and make sure we're all sharing the same information, right? What are the expectations? We kind of go, PW has a great resource for the weather there, and they're honed into that, right? So here's what we can expect, here's the timeframes. They create an operational plan for what they're going to do. We create an operational plan for what we're going to do at Fire. PD creates an operational plan for what we're going to do. All based on the same informed information about the expectations of the storm. But we share that across all the departments. So I get PW's operations plan and PD's, they get mine. They know if we have extra resources on. A lot of times during those storms, because especially for us, it's wind events because we chase down power lines and we'll have 20 or 30 calls backed up at once. And so sometimes we'll staff an extra ambulance, for example, so we can be sure we get EMS crews out where we need and those types of things. It's great that everybody knows that. And then we maintain discussion throughout. One of the great tools that we came out of this process is that we create the shared spreadsheet that anybody can update with regard to closed roads. So as PW or PD are finding closed roads, PD usually reports them through the communications center who updates the spreadsheet. PW has a dispatcher in their office updating it, and we have somebody updating it for us. As we find closed roads and we aren't going to be able to get to a neighborhood, that's getting updated. It allows us to prioritize those getting out. One of the central hubs of coordination for us for some storms is, was Naver Scott County EMA with our ability to call them and prioritize CMP. So again, CMP is getting pulled six ways to Sunday. If you can get the right information to them about why that's a critical road closure. to them about why that's a critical road closure, whether it's because the power's affecting a nursing home, or something like that, they help us prioritize CMP. So in a storm situation, we meet ahead of time, we come up with our own individual leads, and then share that, so everybody's on the same page, and then talk frequently, and by the way we talk frequently is through updating that road closure. Another good example would be whether it was the main state parade, or we had, following some of the riots that happened in Portland, and we had some demonstrations in Auburn, we didn't know where that was going to go. So we got ahead of that and pre-planned that, staged resources, were ready for it, had contingency plans, and then we activated the EOC, and we, you know, PW, myself, PD, we sat up in the room, in the EOC room on the third floor, listening to everybody's radio and corresponding and talking about that, so that we could react if we need to. Fortunately, we didn't have to, but we were as primed and ready as we could be, because we were all co-located. And, you know, without having to wait for a 911 call, had any one of the PW or PD employees seen something, I'd have heard about it, we could have got an ambulance going. Or if I was worried about an ambulance going, because I was worried about their safety, I was right with PD, and we could get a PD officer with them, you know what I mean? So that level of coordination in that EOC, I think, was a really good example of, you know, we felt really well-prepared should something take a left-hand turn in that incident. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Counselor, go ahead.
Do I push buttons or just talk?
No. Just don't, I could use...
Getting back to command stuff, I know if there's an incident, usually you guys let the city manager and mayor know, so that they can keep a pulse on what's going on and not get by surprises. And if there's special powers at the turn, gives the mayor that he'll be able to enact whatever he needs to do, depending on the size of emergency. And then like you had said earlier, that if we have specialty, and we get called in, we can do it, but we commit not as a city councilor, but doing that one type of job.
Correct, yeah.
But we, as councilors, have to be, we have to make sure our manager and mayor know where we're going to be, so if we need to be zoomed in, or have to meet somewhere, that we can vote as a group, if there's some big disaster. When there is a big issue, and the press starts calling, or our constituents, it's not our job to tell the people what's going on, we have to refer that to one special voice that handles all the media and all the questions.
I think that's a really good point that I did get, that I was remiss at not talking about. I use an example a lot of times when I teach this class, you know, imagine if you will that there's a category three hurricane barrel that's toward the east coast of Florida, and, you know, emergency management's activated, they're working on coordinated plans, you know, it's going to be upgraded to a really severe storm, and somebody in a real position of authority, at a high level of government, does a press conference and says that this thing is going to go turn the keys and into the Gulf, right? Well, lots of people stopped reacting, started reacting to the hint that this, you know, the spaghetti charts had almost everything going on the east coast, and there was one little line that drifted up to the panhandle of Florida. Well, by saying that in a public way, it actually moved, got a whole bunch of resources moving, and it was funny, because it was months later that you heard about it, but what they found was that lots of people that needed to evacuate the east coast of Florida couldn't get hotel rooms for 500 miles, because they were plugged up by a lot of people that didn't need to evacuate, just based on a little bit of misstatement of information about what the expectation was. So, the big point around that, I think, is really coordinated messaging. And we're always going to be open and upfront with you, but it's not always the information that gets out, but it's also the timing of when that information gets out. A highly hypothetical example, we may have a discussion and decide that we're going to evacuate a couple of neighborhoods because of a flood situation, right? But we may make the command decision that we're going to put the notice out for this area now, and we're not going to save the other one for another three hours, because we need it to be coordinated evacuation, right? And not bog down a major artery, or whatever the case might be. That's part of what our strategic planning might be. So coordinated messaging, I thank you for bringing it up, counselor, is an important part of incident command, especially in a world where information is immediately available, right? So if that messaging is getting out inappropriately, or in the wrong timing, or whatever, can really hinder what we're really trying to do, which would be really efficient and save property and lives. And we don't, you know, if we plug up a major artery because we weren't methodical about it, it could really be problematic for us. So thank you for that, yeah, you're exactly right.
I think the chief gave you a good broad perspective of a lot of municipalities, or fortunate in Auburn, that through our ordinances, policy, a lot of that authority has been delegated, so that, you know, you have some towns that they couldn't, you know, they couldn't buy a truckload of fuel without having select persons in the room saying yes and signing off on it. We don't have that same restriction here, so we're able to operate at a level where it doesn't mandate that. But we do have systems in place, you, we've gone through COVID, which I think is a pretty great example of the fact that, other than those councils that we're on, other than, we had to have some special meetings for some direction, but not necessarily day-to-day decision-making. So that works out really well. We have, we have a process in place here where we have the EOC that's on the third floor, that comes, like a pump-up that we have here, two of them, there's one upstairs, that is actually designated in our policy procedure where that's where elected officials would be. You're in that room, while EOC's in this room, and if there's a decision that needs to be made, there's an elected body that's there ready to make those decisions. But those are, at such extreme situations, we yet to have to stand that up. We've created the council chamber as the media location for the city in a major incident as well. So we've designated all of this ahead of time, pre-planning, but we have good systems in place that really just operate smoothly that way, where it's a matter of me making sure I'm giving that information out to you, so you know what's the current status, because you're going to be, you all know, you've had some instances where you've had, you know, a ton of people reaching out to you, asking you, what's going on, what can I expect? And we try to provide that information to you, so you can communicate that with constituents. But I think, the other piece that I think the chief mentioned was, not only is that communication component critical, but it's not just pushing information out, we now have a really good system in place where we're trying to collect as much information through social media as we can, so that we can anticipate what's the public perspective of what's happening, and how can we then push them. So, we'll push a post out because of what we've seen on social media, because if there's hundreds of people talking about this, well, we need to get something else that way there, there's a one source of information that's coming out.
Well, one that in words were, well, Forest was moving this big plant thing for power across the bridge, it came out, it was going to be done on this day, this time, and then just before it happened or didn't happen, something else came out, and then when they finally decided to bring it through our city, that's pretty much when it was posted, here it comes.
Yeah, even then, it still hasn't happened, right? So I like that there's, you know, that's unfortunately, dealing with an entity that's not part of the city.
Right.
Even though we have no control over them, but they're communicating to us, and we're trying to push that out as much as we can, and in much advance as we can, because, you're right, that's, that'll be quite an incident, that'll be quite an incident.
Yeah. Is there some way to track that with like GIS, so people could look on the website and just say, oh, because it's moving like at a walking pace?
Yeah.
I have no clue, you know, when I can go on Washington Street on Wednesday, or where, you know, that kind of thing, you know? And so the thing is to avoid it, obviously, most people will do that.
We'll be pushing out some regular updates.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Through social media.
Really interesting viewing, you put a camera on it.
Live cam?
Live cam.
Or just paint, right?
That's right, that's right. Yeah, so they see the signs.
So what is it for the station, the Lewiston, CMP?
Yeah.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, it's a DC to AC converter, yeah, punch of that. But I think that's a really good example, right? I mean, that, you know, in the, I teach these classes all over the state, I'm part of a lot of state organizations, I've worked in other municipalities, one of the things that Auburn, the level of coordination and teamwork within Team Auburn, you don't find everywhere. And like I said, whether it's for information technology, or anything else, you know, the team throughout the city, but, you know, at the director level, the deputy director level, throughout city hall, you know, I've called people you never would have thought I needed to call at two in the morning for bad stuff, that answered the phone, right? And they have something to offer, they have network and connection, and people that they can ask and bring, you know, bring to bear, and you don't, you just don't see that everywhere, you know, there aren't a lot of people that are going to pick up the phone, you know, because Bob's calling at two in the morning, and it's never failed, it's happened for me in Auburn, so.
Our pre-storm meetings now, there's this school representation in those pre-storm meetings, because that's critical for us to be able to make sure we're communicating pre-closing of them. And Bob's right, I mean, with PW, you've got an incident going on, PW already has traffic management plans for every vital artery that we have in the community, to be able to roll out that, that traffic management plan instantly. So, having them at that table, where a lot of times, if I go back in my early days, PW wasn't allowed in that room, you know, that's not, you know, there's place and fire, but that's it. And so now the fact that all the departments are, they had, they contribute a great deal.
The director of PW gets notified automatically when we have a, our construction fire, and they're usually working on a redirect of the traffic plan, without any request from me, because they lean forward on it, right? So, the preparedness that we have, it really will, does pay dividends, and it'll continue to pay dividends as things, the unexpected occurs.
So, it's in that period where training is what we're working on, ICS 300, 400, we have, we have command staff, supervisors, they're all doing their training over the next month as well, so that we, we're in compliance, that Bob can sign his name to that and say, yes, we're NIMs compliant on all that we do that helps out funding, but it's, it's more than that, it's to make sure that we're writing real efficiently as a community, to protect our community, so. And I think that, you know, the other piece that I think Bob mentioned is that, the way that this model is set up is scalable, and so, because we will use it at the lowest level, and then obviously, when it's all hands on, everybody understands it, and they know a lot well.
We're working to try to exercise it a little bit more too, right? To do some exercises with some of the things that, you know, the new hazards that are in the community, or the old hazards that we haven't really practiced well, because you've got to get out and get, you know, practice some of that stuff that you don't see very often, so, continual improvement.
Google Gordon Grant, I love some of his talking points, he's a, he's a really great speaker, so he's done a lot with us. That's it, Meg?
That's it. Okay, we'll be adjourned until seven, and we'll reconvene in the council chamber.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of my favorite activities, Legos.
Chief Jay.
Thank you. Last year we did a really, we worked with our billing company, MRS, who bills for a lot of EMS services in the state, to make recommendations for the change, to get our late rates aligned with other services. That was for the rate increase that took effect in April of 2024. This rate increase is the incremental allowable rate increase for the Medicare from that baseline that we established for the April twenty-four set, which brought us in line with what the recommendation was from the billing company.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a point of information. How does this fee changes compare to other, of the same in other municipalities that have this type of service?
Chief Jay.
Thank you. Last year we did a really, we worked with our billing company, MRS, who bills for a lot of EMS services in the state, to make recommendations for the change, to get our late rates aligned with other services. That was for the rate increase that took effect in April of 2024. This rate increase is the incremental allowable rate increase for the Medicare from that baseline that we established for the April twenty-four set, which brought us in line with what the recommendation was from the billing company.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, but how does this compare to other municipalities that provide the same service? Are we going to be comparable? Are we going to be lower?
We'll be very comparable. Yep, we'll be very comparable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Thank you, Chief. Any member of the public would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Seeing none, we'll close, public comment. Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item will be adoption of the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan to adopt the minutes as written. The vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. There are no communications, presentations, or recognitions tonight, so we'll move on to the first open session. Any member of the public who is invited to speak to the council about any issue related to city business that does not appear on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Larry Pelletier. I reside at one twenty-nine Second Street in, in Auburn, in New Auburn specifically. Lived there for forty-three years. And a lot of you know what I do in my spare time. I've come here before tonight to ask for some, for some help with this, from the city. I've been here multiple times talking about people not picking up after their dogs. Come here to talk about the Fourth of July, we have an ordinance that prevents, supposed to prevent people from shooting off fireworks. We have a big fireworks show at, at the Falls. And the other issue is, this has been prominent for me in particular, is people not leashing their dogs. I've had, in, since I've had the dog, he's nine years old, a small dog, and we've been challenged, I would say, several times, maybe seven or eight times in that, in that nine years, but a couple of times they got a hold of the dog. And it's just a matter of dogs getting, getting away from their owner. Most of them were not on the leash of any kind. I see, I walk every day, five or six times a day with a dog in the neighborhood, New Auburn, you know, Second Street, Riverside Drive, all the way up to Seventh Street and South Main Street. And I've seen people open the door, let the dog go out and do his business. Can't do that. We've been jumped several times. I, I bought some pepper spray, chose not to use it, didn't want to get it in myself or with the dog. I bought a high-powered pellet gun, you know, I didn't want to do that, afraid I'd hit my own dog or hit myself in the foot, whatever, so. I'd like us to, we have ordinances on, on all this stuff and we, for some reason, we either can't or don't enforce the ordinance the way they be, they should be enforced. And I, I think we, my, my solution would be to, to, in particular, say the fireworks. Town of Jefferson up around Augusta, they, before the fireworks, like, three or four days before, they put out a bulletin on the radio stations citing their ordinance and citing, if you're caught, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, two fifty for the next, and I don't know what ours is. And the same thing for, for, you know, the, the dog feces. You know, I've been told, can't do anything unless we see them. Well, I see them all the time, I challenge them all the time. And what, what I'm hearing now from folks since COVID is, well, it's on city property, so, you know, it's no big deal. Well, it is a big deal. The city was, was gracious enough to make up some nice signs, scoop the poop, you know, continue that program. And I'll, I'll put a sign out for everybody, anybody that wants one, and now they're coming up missing, so they're taking the sign. So, I, I don't know if we can do some type of, on the, on the, on the bulletin signs or maybe on, I, I don't know, there's a lot of clever people in this, in this building can come up with something that make people aware that they need to stop this behavior, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. If any other member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There is no unfinished business tonight, we'll move on to new business. The first item is Order ninety-seven zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, establishing an ad hoc committee to review city fees and bring forward a recommendation of changes to the city council for adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Milk, seconded by Counsel Walker. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, adopting changes to the emergency medical services billing rates. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, adopting changes to the emergency medical services billing rates. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, establishing an ad hoc committee to review city fees and bring forward a recommendation of changes to the city council for adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Milk, seconded by Counsel Walker. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, establishing an ad hoc committee to review city fees and bring forward a recommendation of changes to the city council for adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, establishing an ad hoc committee to review city fees and bring forward a recommendation of changes to the city council for adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Discussion by the council? Yes, public comment? Oh, sorry, Belinda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a point of information. How does this fee changes compare to other, of the same in other municipalities that have this type of service?
Chief Jay.
Thank you. Last year we did a really, we worked with our billing company, MRS, who bills for a lot of EMS services in the state, to make recommendations for the change, to get our late rates aligned with other services. That was for the rate increase that took effect in April of twenty twenty-four. This rate increase is the incremental allowable rate increase for the Medicare from that baseline that we established for the April twenty-four set, which brought us in line with what the recommendation was from the billing company.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, but how does this compare to other municipalities that provide the same service? Are we going to be comparable? Are we going to be lower?
We'll be very comparable. Yep, we'll be very comparable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Thank you, Chief. Any member of the public would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close, public comment. Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to the next item, which is reports. For the mayor's report, just one item. Since we last met, I provided welcoming remarks on behalf of the city at the Governor's Sixth Annual Opioid Response Summit. Very well attended. It was hosted at Central Maine Community College, there were over thirteen hundred participants. I think it, the college did a great job in hosting a very important conference, and I think it was a way to, positive way to show off both the college and the city. And that's all I have, and we'll start with Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the homeless committee, but I'll let our chair give the report.
Counsel Whitey. Counsel Cowan.
Just quickly, we're continuing to work hard, we're meeting on a bi-weekly basis. Big shout out to Bill Lowenstein, who took an initiative on the first drafts of our reports, so we'll, we'll keep you posted on that progress.
Counsel Milk. Counsel Weisner.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that coming up on the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth is the LA Balloon Festival, so we have the age-friendly committee there and some other city nonprofits that will be doing vendor stands and, and a bunch of people in this community that will be there helping out, so I just wanted to remind, remind people and if they have the time to go down and support the LA Balloon Fest. Thanks.
Counsel Walker. Counsel Platt.
Thank you. Two quick updates, just a reminder to the council that there's an appointment committee meeting coming up on Thursday. The appointment committee members will be there, but just to remind the council that that'll be occurring. And then also at the upcoming school committee meeting, just a note that there will be a presentation from full, full plates, full potential, which is associated with, if you saw in the paper, a federal grant that the school system's receiving to address food and food security and access to food and all that. So we'll, I'll be learning more about that on Wednesday and can share some information. And for anybody who's interested, feel free to tune in and learn about how we're going to be able to use that money. I believe it was just shy of four hundred thousand dollars, was that right? I'll confirm on Wednesday, but significant amount of money, so.
Counsel Milk.
Forgot to add, Saturday, if anybody is, is free, we have a fundraiser at Lost Valley for the Matt Clausen Scholarship Fund, which he was a teacher at Edward Little, hockey coach, passed away very young in a tragedy. And so some of his buddies get together, we play music, and we raise money for the scholarship fund, which is to benefit kids that have, a student every year that's overcome some challenge. And it's a lot of fun, six-thirty, the band plays and we have a great time, so it's the Matt Clausen Scholarship Fund at Lost Valley Saturday night.
Representative Eggy.
I was just kind of gonna agree about the Balloon Fest. I know that, like, Edward Little has some teams and clubs there, so definitely check it out if you've never been before, it's really fun.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real brief, the Auburn Police Department will be hosting National Night Out tomorrow night, so hopefully folks come out for that event. We usually have a great crowd, plenty of free hot dogs giveaway and other, other activities for kids, so it'll be right at Festival Plaza. I encourage everyone to come out, probably starting at six o'clock, five-thirty, sorry, five-thirty, and it'll go till dusk. Thanks.
We'll now have the second open session. Any member of the public who is invited to speak to the council about any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. The, I was a member, as you, most of you are aware, of the stakeholder group that worked on revising the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district ordinance, particularly the septic program and the requirements for the inspections and the new criteria for septic design and implementation. And the stakeholder group wants to thank the city council for giving second reading and final passage to that at your last meeting on July fifteen. Four days after that, on July nineteen, the city of Lewiston dismissed its long pending suit against the Auburn Water District. You may say, why did that occur? I do not know, expressly no one has told me why. I suspect that those two activities may not be totally coincidental. Why is that of benefit to the city of Auburn per se as opposed to the Auburn Water District? All but a hundred and twenty or so of the city of, excuse me, the Auburn Water District's rate payers are also city of Auburn taxpayers. So that's of some enormous benefit to the taxpayers of the city of Auburn as well as to those who are Auburn Water District rate payers. So thank you again for that activity on behalf of the watershed per se, but also the various payers of taxes and fees in different directions. Thank you.
Any other member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the second open session. For information for the public, the council will be entering into two executive sessions tonight. No action is expected to follow either executive session, and on the conclusion of the second executive session, the council will adjourn. Is there a motion pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six E, to consult with the city attorney regarding the city's legal rights and duties concerning a pending litigation matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the. Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Any discussion by the council? Excuse me, consent items. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item will be adoption of the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan to adopt the minutes as written. The vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. There are no communications, presentations, or recognitions tonight, so we'll move on to the first open session. Any member of the public who is invited to speak to the council about any issue related to city business that does not appear on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Larry Pelletier. I reside at one twenty-nine Second Street in, in Auburn, in New Auburn specifically. Lived there for forty-three years, and a lot of you know what I do in my spare time. I've come here before tonight to ask for some, for some help with this, from the city. I've been here multiple times talking about people not picking up after their dogs. Come here to talk about the Fourth of July, we have an ordinance that prevents, supposed to prevent people from shooting off fireworks. We have a big fireworks show at, at the Falls. And the other issue is, this has been prominent for me in particular, is people not leashing their dogs. I've had, in, since I've had the dog, he's nine years old, a small dog, and we've been challenged, I would, I would say, several times, maybe seven or eight times in that, not nine years, but a couple of times, they got a hold of the dog. And it's just a matter of dogs getting, getting away from their owner. Most of them were not on the leash of any kind. I see, I walk every day, five or six times a day with a dog in the neighborhood, New Auburn, you know, Second Street, Riverside Drive, all the way up to Seventh Street and South Main Street. And I've seen people open the door, let the dog go out and do his business. Can't do that. We've been jumped several times. I, I bought some pepper spray, chose not to use it, didn't want to get it in myself or with the dog. I bought a high-powered pellet gun, and I, I didn't want to do that, afraid I'd hit my own dog or hit myself in the foot, whatever, so. I'd like us to, we have ordinances on, on all this stuff, and we, for some reason, we either can't or don't enforce the ordinance the way they be, they should be enforced. And I, I think we, my, my solution would be to, to, in particular, say the fireworks. Town of Jefferson up around Augusta, they, before the fireworks, like, three or four days before, they put out a bulletin on the radio stations citing their ordinance and citing, if you're caught, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, two fifty for the next, and I don't know what ours is. And the same thing for, for, you know, the, the dog feces. You know, I've been told, can't do anything unless we see them. Well, I see them all the time, I challenge them all the time. And what, what I'm hearing now from folks since COVID is, well, it's on city property, so, you know, it's no big deal. Well, it is a big deal. The city was, was gracious enough to make up some nice signs, scoop the poop, you know, continue that program, and I'll, I'll put a sign out for everybody, anybody that wants one, and now they're, they're coming up missing, so they're taking the sign. So, I, I don't know if we can do some type of, on the, on the, on the bulletin signs or maybe on, I, I don't know, there's a lot of clever people in this, in this building can come up with something that make people aware that they need to stop this behavior, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. If any other member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. There is no unfinished business tonight, we'll move on to new business. The first item is Order ninety-seven zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, establishing an ad hoc committee to review city fees and bring forward a recommendation of changes to the city council for adoption. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Second. Okay. Okay, so let, let's try this again, because apparently my agenda doesn't matches, match this one. So there's going to be three potential executive sessions. Apparently legal counsel is not here yet for the first one, so the, the second will be pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss a personnel matter. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Weisner. The vote will be by show of hands, all counselors in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item of business is Order ninety-eight zero eight zero five twenty twenty-four, adopting changes to the emergency medical services billing rates. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counsel Cowan. Discussion by the council? Yes, public comment? Oh, sorry, Belinda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a point of information. How does this fee changes compare to other, of the same in other municipalities that have this type of service?
Chief Jay.
Thank you. Last year we did a really, we worked with our billing company, MRS, who bills for a lot of EMS services in the state, to make recommendations for the change, to get our late rates aligned with other services. That was for the rate increase that took effect in April of twenty twenty-four. This rate increase is the incremental allowable rate increase for the Medicare from that baseline that we established for the April twenty-four set, which brought us in line with what the recommendation was from the billing company.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, but how does this compare to other municipalities that provide the same service? Are we going to be comparable? Are we going to be lower?
We'll be very comparable. Yep, we'll be very comparable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Thank you, Chief. Any member of the public would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close, public comment. Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to the next item, which is reports. For the mayor's report, just one item. Since we last met, I provided welcoming remarks on behalf of the city at the Governor's Sixth Annual Opioid Response Summit. Very well attended. It was hosted at Central Maine Community College, there were over thirteen hundred participants. I think it, the college did a great job in hosting a very important conference, and I think it was a way to, positive way to show off both the college and the city. And that's all I have, and we'll start with Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the homeless committee, but I'll let our chair give the report.
Counsel Whitey. Counsel Cowan.
Just quickly, we're continuing to work hard, we're meeting on a bi-weekly basis. Big shout out to Bill Lowenstein, who took an initiative on the first drafts of our reports, so we'll, we'll keep you posted on that progress.
Counsel Milk. Counsel Weisner.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that coming up on the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth is the LA Balloon Festival, so we have the age-friendly committee there and some other city nonprofits that will be doing vendor stands and, and a bunch of people in this community that will be there helping out, so I just wanted to remind, remind people and if they have the time to go down and support the LA Balloon Fest. Thanks.
Counsel Walker. Counsel Platt.
Thank you. Two quick updates, just a reminder to the council that there's an appointment committee meeting coming up on Thursday. The appointment committee members will be there, but just to remind the council that that'll be occurring. And then also at the upcoming school committee meeting, just a note that there will be a presentation from full, full plates, full potential, which is associated with, if you saw in the paper, a federal grant that the school system's receiving to address food and food security and access to food and all that. So we'll, I'll be learning more about that on Wednesday and can share some information. And for anybody who's interested, feel free to tune in and learn about how we're going to be able to use that money. I believe it was just shy of four hundred thousand dollars, was that right? I'll confirm on Wednesday, but significant amount of money, so.
Counsel Milk.
Forgot to add, Saturday, if anybody is, is free, we have a fundraiser at Lost Valley for the Matt Clausen Scholarship Fund, which he was a teacher at Edward Little, hockey coach, passed away very young in a tragedy. And so some of his buddies get together, we play music, and we raise money for the scholarship fund, which is to benefit kids that have, a student every year that's overcome some challenge. And it's a lot of fun, six-thirty, the band plays and we have a great time, so it's the Matt Clausen Scholarship Fund at Lost Valley Saturday night.
Representative Eggy.
I was just kind of gonna agree about the Balloon Fest. I know that, like, Edward Little has some teams and clubs there, so definitely check it out. If you've never been before, it's really fun.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real brief, the Auburn Police Department will be hosting National Night Out tomorrow night, so hopefully folks come out for that event. We usually have a great crowd, plenty of free hot dogs giveaway and other, other activities for kids, so it'll be right at Festival Plaza. I encourage everyone to come out, probably starting at six o'clock, five-thirty, sorry, five-thirty, and it'll go till dusk. Thanks.
We'll now have the second open session. Any member of the public who is invited to speak to the council about any item related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Stephen Beal, five seventy-five Johnson Road. The, I was a member, as you, most of you are aware, of the stakeholder group that worked on revising the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district ordinance, particularly the septic program and the requirements for the inspections and the new criteria for septic design and implementation. And the stakeholder group wants to thank the city council for giving second reading and final passage to that at your last meeting on July fifteen. Four days after that, on July nineteen, the city of Lewiston dismissed its long pending suit against the Auburn Water District. You may say, why did that occur? I do not know, expressly no one has told me why. I suspect that those two activities may not be totally coincidental. Why is that of benefit to the city of Auburn per se as opposed to the Auburn Water District? All but a hundred and twenty or so of the city of, excuse me, the Auburn Water District's rate payers are also city of Auburn taxpayers. So that's of some enormous benefit to the taxpayers of the city of Auburn as well as to those who are Auburn Water District rate payers. So thank you again for that activity on behalf of the watershed per se, but also the various payers of taxes and fees in different directions. Thank you.
Any other member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the second open session. For information for the public, the council will be entering into two executive sessions tonight. No action is expected to follow either executive session, and on the conclusion of the second executive session, the council will adjourn. Is there a motion pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six E, to consult with the city attorney regarding the city's legal rights and duties concerning a pending litigation matter?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Moved by.
Could we go to the second item? The attorneys aren't here yet.
Go to the.
Second executive session.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion percent, excuse me, pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss annual evaluation of the city manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so let, let's try this again, because apparently my agenda doesn't matches, match this one. So there's going to be three potential executive sessions. Apparently legal counsel is not here yet for the first one, so the, the second will be pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five six A, to discuss a personnel matter. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Counsel Walker, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Weisner. The vote will be by show of hands, all counselors in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, we will be in executive session.